... motion, sorry. I'd like to call this special, or special, sorry. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. The next regular Board of Education meeting will be held on Tuesday, December 10th at 7:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room. My remarks will be quick tonight. I had the pleasure of joining Dr. Adley at the Cabe Conference. It was great. I can tell you, you can't walk into a room at the Cabe Conference without people surrounding you telling us how lucky we are to have Dr. Adley. I told them, please tell me something mean, I would appreciate it, it would make me feel better just to hear it. But it was nice to see how professionally recognized he is amongst his peers. The convention was also very solid on workshops, everything from negotiations to student diversity and diversity across all levels, learners, race, creed. It was really, it was very interesting and it was a great two days. So, some links I will forward out to the Board from some of the speakers who are really impactful and we may choose to kind of synthesize some of those ideas, but I would encourage Board members either to go on the Cabe website, or if they want to go to the convention next year, please let me, Dean, or I know. It was really very insightful. And also, Mr. Mooney was up there and I would say we are well represented in this district, both as superintendent and legal advice, according to every single other person in the state. So, it was a real value. Besides that, I'll just say a happy Thanksgiving to everybody and a quick congratulations to our swimming relay team, which broke the school record, and good luck to our football players who will be playing in the Turkey Bowl, and every other concert or sport that I have missed, I am sorry, those are the only ones I know about right now, but I wish them well and I hope everyone has a happy holiday. And hopefully, we won't go tonight, too late tonight, but I'll say that at the end as well. With that, we will move on to public comment.
Thank you, and it was nice to have Darien. Oh, sorry.
We're all off our game tonight. Public comment, please.
Now you think you're the public.
You got three minutes.
Hi, I'm Christina Boudo. I live at 4 Kona Road.
And I am Mia Mahopolis, and I live at 3 Mansfield Place. And we are here as co-presidents representing DAEG, the Darien Advocates for the Education of the Gifted. We are so pleased that the district will be giving an update on the IDEA program at the December 10th Board of Ed meeting, and we will be there in support of our IDEA administrators and teachers. Tonight, we wanted to briefly highlight what we see as strengths of our district's existing IDEA program. Our gifted students currently have a program that allows for development of critical thinking, complex problem solving, and creative collaboration in a team-based learning environment. The strong humanities and ELA-based curriculum affords students access to explore a breadth of subject areas, and our teachers the ability to challenge their thinking along the way. In addition, DAEG has identified some focus areas that are of keen interest to district families, and we would respectfully ask that the district's December 10th Board of Ed update incorporate answers to the following questions. What is the vision and future of the IDEA program? In a high-performing school district like Darien's, when was the last time that we conducted a formal review of our district's program approach to make sure it is still a leader in excellence? What types of gifted programs does our DIRG have to educate gifted learners? Should we be assessing and potentially implementing any of those components? What is the allocation of teacher time for IDEA instruction versus time they spend on evaluations versus PD? How many student evaluations were conducted last year? And what type of PD is given to teachers of the gifted, and do they collaborate? What are the current IDEA class sizes of both the elementary and middle schools? How do our class sizes compare to the optimal size for a gifted class according to national best practices?
We know middle school IDEA scheduling is never easy. Lunch is an important time to interact socially with their peers. We often lose middle school IDEA students because their class is during lunch period. In addition, we've seen a large drop of IDEA by students entering ninth grade because they choose not to do an achievers class. Have we exhausted all of their options for when we can hold IDEA classes at MMS? Have we considered alternatives for the ninth grade achievers class scheduling at the high school to encourage better participation? What are our strategies for keeping kids excited about and in the program through MMS in ninth grade? When a student drops out of the program, is there a survey or exit interview to gather specific data as to why? At the elementary level, parents and students are eager for math differentiation and acceleration either in the classroom or in addition to the current IDEA curriculum. Are we looking at math curriculum that will challenge our brightest learners better at the elementary level? Have we considered math acceleration at the elementary level? We believe the current IDEA curriculum to be solid and would not want to see what, will see that impacted negatively by trying to squeeze math into it. As an alternative, have we considered adding time to the current 90-minute pullout to incorporate a separate math component? And finally, what type of PD is given to general ed teachers to engage and enrich gifted students within their classrooms? Are classroom teachers given effective training and tools to differentiate within the classroom specifically for gifted learners? Is this done consistently within grades, schools, and across our district? In closing, we are very appreciative of the administration for their ongoing willingness to collaborate with DAEG and for their continuing dedication to educate our gifted learners. We thank you for your time and look forward to hearing from you on December 10th.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stacy Pia. I live at 10 Clocks Lane. I am the Chair of the Council for Darien School Parents Special Ed Subcommittee, and I added a new hat to my closet this year as I am the Co-Chair of Advocacy for DAEG. As the administrators prepare for their presentations on the IDEA program and special education, we'd like to respectfully submit the questions for consideration. How do we identify twice-exceptional children? Do we have accommodations in the evaluation process for the IDEA program? If so, how are these accommodations determined for the child, and what type of involvement do parents have in determining appropriate accommodations for testing of their child? Do we have a formal exception process for children, for families of students who are not admitted into IDEA to have their cases reviewed? Are IDEA teachers provided with any professional development that addresses the needs of their 2E students? Are accommodations provided in the IDEA classroom? What role do parents play in determining the appropriate supports for their child in the IDEA classroom? Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? With that, we will move on to Superintendent's Report.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you out tonight, thank you. And it was nice to see the RAN Board of Education represented at Cabe, and I look forward to inviting the rest of the Board and many of my colleagues here at next year's event. I also look forward to being able to submit materials and criteria for Board performance because there are different leadership awards. And I also look forward to having our kids down there and performing in front of all Boards of Education and all superintendents across the state. So, again, thank you, Terron. I want to congratulate the students at the middle school, our seventh and eighth graders of the Quiz Bowl. We had three teams that placed first, fourth, and sixth this week, this past weekend, and it was wonderful to see kids perform so well. I know it's a very, very popular program that serves a lot of kids. And the next program we look forward to, the next competition, is December 7th. I also want to recognize the kids in the drama, the DHS Theater 308. If you had the opportunity to see the cast and crew at The Curious Incident of the Dog in the night, it was absolutely outstanding. I mean, it's absolutely fabulous show. It just was just so clever, and our young actors and actresses were just phenomenal. And given the topic of this particular one, it was particularly touching in some ways and appropriate. So, congratulations, and I look forward probably to the spring musical. I want to also recognize the girls' swimming, Class L State Championship that they won. Congratulations, they've done that since the last time we were here at the Board. And Fieldhak FCAC co-champions and state runners-up, congratulations to our Fieldhakay. I also want to recognize Coach Rob Trafon. Last Thursday, he was inducted into the Connecticut School Football Hall of Fame. Many of our parents here this evening, and certainly our schools and staff, there's a plethora of community service activities that are going on at this time of the year that support families in need, and these are activities that are not assessed by test scores or wins and losses, and perhaps are the most, are most sort of precious and important lessons that we can pass on to our children. So, thank you for all the staff who organize those, the PTOs who organize and support, and the kids that actively participate. So, again, thank you for all the participation. Turkey Bowl, sorry, there's no tickets left, that's it. Thank you for everybody who was able to make that possible event, and we look forward to Thursday morning. I want to mention that the National Conference for Community and Justice, the meeting is on December 12th. Final invitations go out tomorrow. It will be held at the High School Media Center. So, more to come, but just to give a heads up. There have been a number of technology sessions for parents. I appreciate many people here have been to those for elementary and middle school parents, and there will be offerings for high school session, I believe, next week when we come back. There was professional learning that happened this week in the district. Dr. Marilyn France spent the full day of residence with our elementary principals, and she was really working on a self-study for specially-designed instruction and team teaching at the elementary school level. We continue to reach out for STEM, particularly our high school. That was a nice sort of tradition, a nice program to see our high school students go down to the elementary school students. Next stop, I believe, is at Royal, grades two and four. So, we thank everyone who makes that possible. The entry plan survey, I have a survey to go out the first week when I come back, so every one of the parents, community members, constituents will receive a short survey from me, which really looks at those questions of what are the rich traditions we have? What are the challenges and what are the opportunities those challenges possess moving forward? To our parents, thank you for your patience. If you're dropping off your kids, particularly, as you say, some of the elementary schools, as we sort of do a wee bit of maintenance work on our access control vestibles, so basically, it used to be called mantraps, right? We're going to access control vestibles. Anyway, but we're doing a wee bit of maintenance on those, and a wee bit of inconvenience perhaps for you, but I also appreciate you working with the new safety procedures. The first and most important priority we have is the safety of our students and our staff. So, those are steps that were taken, and so, just thank you for your patience as we work through some transitions and implementing the new processes. We do need a board rep, we may have one, but I just was informed by CES we need a board rep for CES Board. I thought we had one, I thought we had one. We do have one, okay. All right, we do have one. Thanksgiving is upon us, so I certainly extend on behalf of the staff a peaceful and happy Thanksgiving to our families. I too have lots to be thankful for, I'm here in a wonderful community, so thank you for that this particular year, and I wish you a happy Thanksgiving to all our families. Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. It is requested that the Board approve the following minutes. Minutes of the special meeting and executive session held November 12th, 2019. Mrs. Stein and Mr. Maroney, so move, all in favor. That is unanimous from all attending. Minutes of the organizational meeting held November 12th, 2019, may have motion. Mrs. Stein, second. Mr. Dunne, all in favor. That is unanimous. And minutes of the regular Board meeting held on November 12th, 2019. Mr. Brown and Mr. Maroney, all in favor. That is also unanimous. Thank you, everybody. We'll move forward on presentation and discussions. Oh, I'm sorry, Board Committee reports. Are there any Board Committee reports this evening? Mr. Dunne.
Just a quick update. Oxbridge, the schematic design phase has concluded. That will continue to evolve as we walk, as we move through the project. Both SLAM and ONG were working on cost estimates. The last Oxbridge Committee meeting was canceled because ONG and SLAM had not come together to kind of reconcile their overall cost estimates. So, we've had a couple of conference calls with them. We're pushing them, they're going to work through the holiday weekend so we can schedule our next meeting to go over the official cost estimates between the contractor and the architect. So, but the overall schematic design is done. It was a great experience, a lot of great participation, and I think the product is moving in the right direction. So, the next phase will be critical as we get a handle on the overall costs that come together.
Okay. Any other Board Committee reports? Mrs. Ritchie.
So, the Finance Committee met on November 20th. We elected a new chairperson, and we went through the account reconciliations and the transfers that we will discuss later on tonight.
And your new chairperson is?
That would be me.
Just for the official record. Any other Board Committee reports? Mr. Brown.
Facilities Committee met in November and elected a chairman of Dennis Maroney, and we will be discussing our minutes, our proceedings on removal of, requesting RFPs for removal of the portable libraries imagined and DHS storage later this evening.
Thank you. We'll move forward on presentations and discussions. Curricular update, mathematics. Dr. De Silva and Dr. Bellows.
So, in just a few minutes, Dr. Felicia Bellows, Math Department Chair, grades six through 12, will provide us an update on the work of the math research team that actually began last school year. This work began as a direct result of the current primary resource at Middlesex Middle School being set to expire this spring. This also came as a result of a rollout that we have begun in our elementary school that used a similar model when we identified the new mathematics primary resource of Math and Focus. And you may also remember that next year will be our final year of that rollout at the elementary level with fifth grade having that wonderful experience. So, I'll now turn it over to Felicia, who will present around four parts. The first part is really the purpose of the secondary math research team, themes and guiding principles that guided the work of the team over the past year and a half, the outcomes of that research, and the recommendation for a primary resource for a middle school to begin, well, hopefully with professional learning this summer, and then implementation in the fall, and the future work. I'm very proud of Dr. Bellows alongside Alinda Johnson and her math research team, some of which I see here in the audience, and all of the hard work that they have really been a part of. Most importantly, the process in which they're a part of, this isn't one single person making a decision around what's best for our students, but rather a group that begins in elementary, has our middle school, and even our high school staff members. So, I just want to say that now because I imagine I might forget later. So, well done, Felicia.
Thank you, Dr. De Silva. As part of our vision for our K-12 math program, we believe that students in Darien should have access to the highest quality of instruction and learning, and should be led to see the beauty, yeah, beauty, and value of mathematics in the world around them. So, as you may remember, and as Dr. De Silva said, our current primary resource used in grades six through eight, Big Ideas Math, is set to expire at the end of this school year. And in response to the timing of our resource expiring, and given that the elementary program is in the process of implementing Math and Focus for grades K through five, we put together a secondary-level math research team in the fall of 2018, last year. This secondary-level math research team includes teachers, administrators, and specialists from all levels, elementary, middle, and high school. And the purpose of the team was to research the primary resources for grades six through eight, investigate the implications on the high school program, and to make recommendations. And of course, we looked at the K through five transition as that was a primary focus as well. Over the course of the last school year, the team researched and completed a comprehensive study to determine the most appropriate programs to pilot with the end goal of making a recommendation. As part of this process, our team attended math awareness workshops, webinars, and consulted with neighboring districts. The team narrowed down the search and selected three programs to pilot, which took place over the course of the spring of 2019 and the fall of this year. The pilot was closely aligned to our current scope and sequence to ensure that there would be no impact on our current courses. The three resources that were selected to pilot were Big Ideas Math, the new version modeling real life, Math and Focus, the 2020 version, and illustrative math. Those shouldn't say ones, those are bulleted points, I just noticed that, must have been in the transfer over. We took a close look at both the print and digital platforms and considered the level of alignment of the courses to our current scope and sequence. The three resources were all very similar with content that was aligned to our current curriculum and academic vocabulary that was consistently uniform regardless of the resources selected. So, our work as a team centered around the following themes and guiding questions. Alignment. Does the program align to the common course date standards and our current grade-level curriculum? Accessibility. Are the resources easily accessible by students, parents, and teachers? Coherence. Does a resource provide a coherent progression across lessons, units, and course levels? Flexibility. Is the resource flexible and accommodating to meet the needs of our Darien community? And that includes ELL students, students with learning differences, gifted and advanced students. Support. Does a resource provide multiple levels of support for students as they progress from the elementary level to the secondary level? And then placement. Does a resource provide students with opportunity to accelerate at various times throughout the program? So, what we learned is that many JERGE schools and schools across the state of Connecticut are currently in transition and plan to use multiple resources to support their current curriculum. Illustrative math is currently being piloted by many schools across the state as it is a free resource. All of the resources we considered used common language, common problem-solving approaches, and academic vocabulary that's universal. However, some of the resources presented preferred strategies for problem-solving, whereas others presented a more balanced approach. All of the resources utilized a concrete, pictorial, and abstract approach, as well as metacognition and visualization that has guided the work at the elementary level. When the elementary math research team made their recommendation for a program, there were certain non-negotiables that they looked for, and as a secondary team, these attributes were prioritized and valued as we made a decision. As a team, we looked for a resource that had the balance, one that balances conceptual understanding with procedural fluency, one that balances the digital and the print platform, ah, sorry, and one that balances exploratory discovery learning with scaffolded instruction. We looked for a resource that was aligned to our current sequence and progression of courses, and one that had a strong instructional model that fostered deep conceptual understanding. In addition, we paid close attention to the variety of ways that it would be engaging for students across all levels. The program should be user-friendly, adaptive, interactive, and should offer multiple options for differentiation and modifications for struggling and advanced learners. So, what we are recommending is Big Ideas Math, the 2019 Modeling Real Life Edition. Big Ideas Math provided a, provides a balanced approach to learning math with engaging resources, a coherent progression of concepts for students, and opportunities for students to become empowered mathematical thinkers. The instructional design presents students with explorations and modeling exercises to guide them to an understanding of concepts in a complete and comprehensive way. There's a strong emphasis on problem-solving in the classroom, modeling situations, and connecting math to the real world. As a resource, it balances the conceptual understanding with the procedural fluency, and scaffolding is incorporated throughout, ensuring that all learners attain that procedural fluency. And for each concept, there are modeling examples connected to the real world so that students can transfer and apply their learning to the world around them. As far as differentiation, throughout every lesson, differentiated problems are included for the emerging proficient and advanced learners. It's a resource that's accessible to all students balancing the discovery learning with the scaffolded instruction. Print and digital resources are available to meet the needs of all students. Big Ideas as a resource offers online access and capabilities that are far superior to the other resources that we considered. The homework and assessment component alone allows for customizable assignments. In other words, select groups of students can be assigned specific problems to meet their needs, and that can be monitored to inform their instruction, the teacher's instruction. This ability to differentiate digitally is unique to the program. For our ELL learners, the resource has the capacity to translate vocabulary into 14 languages and provides ELL support boxes for teachers with notes on how to differentiate instructions specifically for ELL learners. From a technological standpoint, Big Ideas has an innovative and interactive student interface that's dynamic. It provides learners with resources that support the instruction that has already taken place in the classroom. For example, they may use concrete manipulatives in the classroom like algebra tiles, bar models, but they have virtual manipulatives for when they get home if they needed additional resources, lesson tutorials, digital practice. As a system, it provides teachers with that immediate feedback as well needed to drive instruction. Similar to the program that has been implemented at the elementary level, there are connections to STEAM activities that allow students to see mathematics in the world around them, and to make those further connections. In addition, there are performance-based tasks. Our next steps and our future work. Big Ideas Math is an improved and updated version of our current program. However, there are multiple additional components that need to be incorporated within our scope and sequence. For example, at the beginning of each unit, there's a STEAM video and a performance-based task which is used to connect to the learning to the world around the students. These components need to be worked into our current scope and sequence as students learn to make sense of real-world problems and persevere in solving them. The added performance-based tasks can also contribute to the students' digital portfolio work at Middlesex. It's important to note that in choosing this as a primary resource, it's not a curriculum, but a vehicle used to support our curriculum. Professional learning. This year, our sixth-grade teachers, some of them are here, have already attended Math and Focus professional learning sessions at various elementary schools. And this work will continue on as our grade five to six articulation team works on implementing strategies that take place at both the elementary and secondary level. Our teachers will continue to attend fifth-grade professional learning sessions so that they have a clear perspective on how the incoming sixth-grade students have approached problem-solving throughout the elementary program. Like the elementary program, the focus on the secondary level will be on the concrete, pictorial, and abstract representations of mathematics for students. Renaming of courses. Our courses are currently called Course One, Course Two, and Course Three, and this has often led to confusion about course selection, confusion from parents, teachers, students. So, we're recommending that we rename the courses to Grade Six Math, Grade Six Advanced, Grade Seven Math, Grade Seven Advanced, Grade Eight Pre-Algebra, and Accelerated Pre-Algebra so that it makes more sense. Our vision and belief in the math department has been to provide pathways and access to courses for all students, to challenge them to think critically and creatively, and to ensure that they have opportunities that are developmentally appropriate throughout their secondary-level experience. Most importantly, we believe that they should be confident mathematicians with the ability to persevere and reason abstractly in the pursuit of any, to solve any problems that may come their way. I thank you for your time, and I thank members of the committee. There's Michelle Kirshner, Dan Kencik, Sue Shadon, and of course, Lynda Johnson, my colleague, for coming, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Bellows, and Dr. De Silva, and the whole team. Are there any Board comments or questions? Mrs. Ritchie.
So, you just touched upon it toward the end there, but I think parents are probably going to wonder, where is my child, especially if they're already in the middle school, where is my child going to come out? So, if they're taking Course One now, that would be called Grade Six.
Yeah.
And then if they're taking Course Two now in sixth grade, would that be Grade Six Advanced?
Six Advanced, yeah.
So, I think there's probably, needs to be a translation for parents just so they're clear.
Yeah.
So that they know the trajectory that their child is on because it's important to parents, that that trajectory hasn't changed, it's just the...
It's just the renaming.
The renaming of those courses, that they're essentially the same.
Yeah, I agree. And I think that the Course One, Course Two, and Course Three gives a perception that Course One is below level, and it's not.
Right.
And that's why I think it's...
Right. So, it's, Course One is Grade Six Level.
Six, it's grade-level math.
Right.
And not easy grade-level math either in Darien, I have to say.
Right.
Further Board comments or questions? Further board comments or questions? Mrs. McCannan?
Just on that point, so what is Course Three then?
Course Three would be three years of math in one for an incoming sixth grader, and that would be accelerated pre-algebra because that's really what it's covering, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade math. So--
Mr. Brown?
No. So I appreciate, and I just a couple of points I heard in there, and I would appreciate if you could give me a little color. So I heard about adaptability that exists within the software component. I heard about the ability to really focus to certain individuals, certain tasks. I would just wonder, how are the metrics there? And I guess the overall question I'm having is with adaptability, how much of that is systematic and how much of that is built into the system? And really, I'm wondering, does that free up time for the teachers to focus on other things? Is there a, you know, benefit there in terms of efficiency of their time?
So some of the other programs were one-size-fits-all type of thing where you could only assign a limited database for a restricted number of problems for -- and that was it. This program allows teachers to pull from any book in the series so that if you were to recognize that a student was lacking skills in fractions, but they're in Grade Seven Math, you can pull and they can assign those problems to that particular student as an additional component for the homework. So in other words, like specially designed instruction, but not just for students with learning differences or disabilities, but to all students. How it frees it up is that if students are mastering that concept and they receive immediate feedback, the teachers, they don't have to move, you know, they don't have to go over homework necessarily. They can only go over the specific problems that are causing difficulties for students.
Okay. So it says, and I guess a follow-up to that. So for instance, say the GMAT, or there's some exams that are adaptive, you get the first few right, they get a little harder as you go?
The S backs like that, actually.
Okay. So do we have some of that functionality here that the teachers can certainly monitor and have the, you know, wherewithal that's having? Does the system kind of drive that at all?
We're not testing students on a system, like on a--
I just was asking, the digital platform lets you, if somebody's like getting every answer right, do they get a little harder questions? And does the teacher become aware of that?
They're assigned specifically by the teacher, so the teacher would choose and control it.
All right. So that's controlled, there's no dynamic. Thank you, May.
Mrs. McCannan, did you have a follow-up?
Well, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay. So I know we're already using it, but given that you looked at also at Math in Focus and thinking of that in terms of continuity, can you talk about, I mean, you certainly outlined very clearly why you like this program, but can you talk about what you felt the trade-offs were, why you didn't want to continue Math in Focus?
Math in Focus had a very, very strong program at the elementary level, but at the middle school level, when we looked at it and compared it to what we currently have in Big Ideas, and now the Big Ideas Math as a newer version has so much more, it was like taking steps backwards in terms of what it had to offer, especially with the digital component. And our needs at the secondary level, we're more, we have different course levels, obviously, you know, and so we need to be able to allow students the flexibility to move up or down a level at any point and assess that. You couldn't do that with their platform. It was like PDF files that were, and a small, limited database for selecting problems that wasn't comparable.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Maroney?
So I think that's music to my ears. So what I'm hearing is that, as opposed to the past, when it was your grade-five test was dictated what math you would take in twelfth grade, that there's the ability to move up or down now in these math programs according to how well or not you're doing in the class.
Yes, absolutely.
So that's a great advantage, I think. I think it's a, it was a lot of stress on kids who were, you know, missed a test and, you know, just missed getting into a class and then never was able to advance or not in a class.
And it's hard to break that old thinking, that paradigm, that people still think there's tracking and there's still no movement, when in fact, we give students the opportunity anytime they're looking to move up or down a level. We have conversations, recommendation, but students can. From six through twelve, there's a lot of room for moving and trying.
And with that, I think the question I have as well, though, is there's still, there still seems to be a big transition from elementary school to middle school with that first jump. Well, I don't know if it's the first jump, but to go to double-accelerated math is a big jump, and I know kids can handle that, or at least some can, but are we asking too much in one year and maybe should we think about accelerating that in grades four and five as opposed to just one year and taking three math cla-- two, three classes in one?
I think there's a lot of pressure on kids right now as it is, even in sixth grade. If we were to, I mean, this is just my opinion, and we're studying placement across the board, but if you were to move that anxiety down to younger levels, it would be, from a social-emotional component, it would be even that much tougher. I mean, there's no, it's not an end-all at fifth to sixth grade. And that's why we took away that test that they used to test into it because it was becoming something that wasn't healthy. And there's flexibility and there's movement, and people would study, get tutored for one particular test which wasn't really indicative of their ability. So we like to look at the whole picture, the whole child.
So I, that's a follow-up I have to Mr. Maroney's question. I think that often we see in the community that we want our kids to achieve, are we comfortable with our placement process, for which the board has asked a lot of questions, such that kids who need the twice-accelerated or three years of math in one year are offered that opportunity because there is a group of kids who thrive on that, and that's their strength? But that we have a strong enough placement system that we're really identifying that group rather than having kids and parents feel the pressure of like, I have to be in the top group. Do we feel like our placement, we have, it sounds like we've revised it, I know we ask it every year, but do we feel comfortable where we are? Are we still looking at that placement process?
I would, I'll speak on behalf of both Linda and Felicia, and I think our administrative team. We're always looking at our placement structures. Holistically, we're looking at every placement structure that we have in the district K-12, but specifically for math, I think we have made some changes over the past several years. We revisit it each year to be sure that we're giving our students every opportunity in the healthiest way possible and quite frankly, in the most authentic way possible. And that has been a shift, I think the most significant one, has been that after-school test that parents brought their children to, and we had children crying, anxious, parents being upset because their child was crying and anxious, children that were studying at unhealthy levels for what we believe that we should know well enough about our students, at least in the transition from fifth to sixth. And then of course, if our students evidence that they can do more, want to do more, then that door is open, and we believe that philosophically. And I think we're coming around as a group about all of these different pieces at all of these different levels and being sure that we're being open enough, but giving children the most authentic experience to evidence what they can do at this moment in time. Having said that, I would say that we do revisit our structures every year and to be sure that we are doing the best that we can to look at the child's health, social-emotional wellness, and when they're in those courses, that they're not applying so much pressure on themselves that it's difficult if they have to make a transition, whether that's one way or the other way.
Okay. One other question. We've now seen a resource kind of change when we look at the elementary. We're seeing the resource change at middle. Should we, as a board, be anticipating that at the high school level, or is all of this really prepping kids to hold to the current high school model?
I'll let Felicia speak to the high school a little bit, but what I would say is that resources look different for students in mathematics than perhaps other content areas. You don't hear a lot about textbooks, let's just say, for elementary social studies or even middle school social studies. We've looked at what are the resources that we have available for those students in mathematics. At this point, at the elementary and middle school, we do believe that a primary resource does support their learning and structure. We have a lot of other resources for our other courses at the high school, not necessarily a traditional textbook. I don't anticipate that content would necessarily change at the high school level, given the shifts that we've made at the elementary and middle. I'm proud of the way that the team has gone through the process in identifying the primary resource. One would have anticipated that we would have ended up with a similar resource in middle school that we have at the elementary school. And what I'm proudest about is that the team thought carefully about what our math program does offer at the elementary level and identified that those same pieces are available in Big Ideas, but the digital resource and the developmental differences of our middle-school children, middle-aged children are different. And as a result, we didn't go with the path of least resistance, which would have been Math in Focus K-8, but rather picked what we believe our middle-school children need that is a little bit different, and that digital component was a significant difference that our students there needed and our teachers needed.
Great. Thank you, thank you, Dr. -- oh, Mrs. Ritchie.
Just one quick question about phasing it in and how you foresee that occurring and when, and how easily you think it'll happen.
So because we currently use Math in Focus, I mean, I'm sorry, because we currently use Big Ideas, unlike Math in Focus, which was rolling, they were rolling it out two years at a time, we will implement it all next year. We'll be able to, we have a lot of work to do, you know, starting as soon as we are okayed to do it, but it's, but we will revamp some of the orders of things and the strategies. We've already started. We've been proactive in terms of attending the same conferences that the K-5 teachers are so that we have similar problem-solving strategies, but we're aiming to do it all in one year.
It's a little bit different, Deb, just in terms of a rollout plan at an elementary school with any content area than at the middle school level. Teachers teach one content area. At the middle school, they're responsible for teaching mathematics, they're responsible for teaching English. We have to think differently when it's at the elementary level because teachers teach many content areas, and so if they have a new social studies unit, or two, or three, or science, which has happened, significant curriculum changes have happened at the elementary level that teachers have had to grow in terms of content and professional learning. We've had to be very thoughtful about when things are rolled out. We also had to be sure that our teacher, our students had the background knowledge that they needed or enough, and even shifts within units. So we had to, for example, in third grade, we have to give our students a particular unit, an extra unit, to make up for some time when you're rolling out. You can't just bring in a K-5 program all at the same time and anticipate that our students would be prepared for that, and really, quite frankly, our teachers as well. So it's just a different process that happens at an elementary level than a middle school for the reasons I just mentioned.
Thank you both. One more?
Awesome. I'd like to, first off, say thank you very much for the presentation and particularly for outlining the criteria that you use to make your selections. It's really helpful to see it here. We hear a lot about differentiation or flexibility, as you call it here. As you know, we heard a public comment. I'd like to pick up on Mr. Brown's point and say that, you know, in terms of the metrics that we're thinking about, one of the things that I would really love for us to be able to see at the board is how effectively differentiation is happening. And I can think of a few ways I might like to see that. I'd like to understand how it's happening inside the classrooms, whether that's elementary or, I know we're talking about secondary today, but also secondary. And then also whether, how that's happening by class. So for example, now we have Course Three. What does enrollment in Course Three look like now that we have a couple of different changes? Like we have the change where we no longer have the test, is our enrollment in Course Three the same? And then what does it look like as we go and implement this program going forward?
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Sorry, I have a birthday girl texting me. I'm just saying happy birthday to my daughter. Thank you. We will move forward to the presentation and updated five-year capital plan. Mr. Rudel and Mr. Ledge.
She knows better than to leave that with me. So every year in November, present the capital plan to the Board of Ed and then answer questions, make some adjustments, and then the board votes on it usually in December before they actually start the rest of their budget hearings. So this year's plan is actually a little less expensive than last year's and the plan from the year before, and it continues along using that same priority scale. We try to do things in some sort of logical sequence so that we can keep the buildings functioning and operating in top condition as we go along. So this year, as you can see, the two Priority One items for the high school is carpet in the library. That was a Priority Two for the past two years. This item, when we go to the installation, we modified a little to fit the library reimagining project. I've already discussed that with Joan McGeadigan and the library staff, Jackie Bennett at the high school. Rebuilding the tennis courts, we moved from a couple of years out to this year, and we actually got an estimate from, there's a company on this part of the United States that does it, it's called Post-Tension Concrete, and that's the system that was used to rebuild the courts down at Wee Beach. And this is the pricing for it, that's a fairly exact price. You go to the middle school, I'm sorry, are there any questions about the high school? Do you want to wait till I finish everything, or how do you want to do it?
Let's run through them, because I just want to remind everyone what the five-year plan, what we're doing with this. So let's run through them all, and then we'll go back.
All right. Middlesex Library Carpet, we actually postponed this from a few years ago and pushed it out, and now it's time to be done. Repaved the access rotor on the rear of the building, that's in very poor condition, really manifested itself this year. We have a camera upgrade. This is a part of our security program. There's a, there's a need to upgrade both the number of cameras in that building plus the server that maintains the data for a certain number of days. And those are our Priority One items for Middlesex. The other items we have in there are Priority Two and Three. We do have another year left before we have to start annually testing. Our oil tank will remove it. We are now running on natural gas, so we really don't need that tank anymore. So I have that in there as a two, just so the board is aware that that's going to be an expense coming up. Hindley School, projection is to, the only one we have is the curb sidewalk and blacktop replacement for the bus loop. It's in very poor condition. We patched it, and whatever we do there won't affect anything else that's done on that building as far as the roof we're hoping to do this summer, removing portables and things like that. Holmes Elementary School, last year, the Board of Ed gave us money to do a study on what it would cost to revamp the heating, ventilating, and air conditioning system of that building. And we did that, and as part of the study that was done, you know, to develop a set of plans that could be set out to bid and actually be constructed, they estimated it would cost about $300,000 in professional engineering fees for that plan. So that's in next year's budget, and if you look out at '21, '22, you see that big number there? That's the cost of that plan.
That is a big number, Mr. George.
Yes. And you can tie that number back into the five-year building condition survey plan. If you go through and, and there's some items in that plan that were duplicates, you know, different ways of doing the same thing, but if you add them all up, that's the number you're going to hit also. Royal School, we really don't have any items that are number-one priority that have to be done at this time. It's felt that between the small classrooms up on the second floor, the need to get rid of the portables, the need to look at other space in that building like the library and the cafeteria, that bringing something up now as a one could be something that gets removed in three to four years is really not a good way to spend the money. Tokenik School, I put in as a one widening the roadways last year when we took the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance on the tour of the buildings. One of the things that was noted was that the access roads around the Tokenik School are very narrow. They're actually just eight feet and ten feet in certain spots, and this would widen them to twelve feet. So we keep the cars out of the mud and make it a little safer for everybody. And upgrading the Edwards fire alarm panel, it's hard to believe, but that panel in that building is no longer being supported after 2020 by Edwards. So it's, there were two types of panels you could have gotten, an Edwards ES2 or an ES3. We got an ES3 at the middle school, and we got an ES2 at Tokenik due to the size of the building, the smaller panel. It was, it was the correct fit at the time. They're not supporting it anymore. So we have to upgrade that to an ES3. Central Office, Central Services Building, we have no Priority One items. And the vehicle replacement program, we have two this year. We tried to squeeze an extra year out of-- We tried to squeeze an extra year out of Truck 42, which we were able to get out of it, but it is time to replace it this year coming up. 59 is our delivery vehicle. It's got close to 200,000 miles on and it's breaking down, you know, monthly. And then the lockdown lockout system enhancements, that represents an expansion of the lockdown alarm system that's in place at these schools. So there we are.
Okay. So we'll go back for comments and questions, but remember, because this did come up last year and Mr. Shinie is new, what we do is we see this, we see it again. It's not that we can't change and rearrange during the budget process, but what we typically move forward with in the budget process are the ones. So over the next two weeks is where we would kind of have conversations, ask questions about, do we change these numbers? Why do we change these numbers? With the idea that we would approve the plan and that would help inform the district's budgeting. Last year we did move numbers even after the fact, but as much as we can, we try to inform the district on thoughts. With that, I'll go comments and questions. Mrs. Stein.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. A couple of questions first. When you go back to the HVAC study, the 300,000, is that number you're coming up with, the 4-2 for the first school? I can't remember, was it Hindley or Holmes? How accurate do you think that anticipated cost is? I mean, we're, I know that was based off the building conditions study, but if we're going to pay 300,000 to design it?
I think that number's very conservative, and by the time that shows up as a number one, it would probably be 10 to 15% lower than it is now. The money spent this year, there was about 75 or 80 budgeted. We spent a little under 20,000, and we took like a very long view of how would we fix this, how would we fix this, how would we fix that? And so taking that into consideration, what would it cost to develop a set of construction plans, plans that the fire marshal, the health department, and the building inspector are going to approve? And, you know, plans that we may be able to apply for some energy grants to get some money back? And the study that was done, he felt it would be about $300,000 to develop those construction documents. And put them out to bid and, you know, follow the construction project through.
I guess my question is, is it premature to put 4-2 in there when we haven't designed our system yet?
Yes, it is. It would be pre, yeah, so I left it out.
Okay. And so then my next question is a follow-up to that. Given the fact that this year, if we just go with priority ones, this is more an administration slash board question, we're lower than historical. Are we better off balancing out some of the dollars and frontloading this year given the high costs in the next three years? And that's something I think we need to have discussions about.
I agree. I absolutely agree. And you do have it as a priority one, though you have it in 21, 22, you have the construction of the HVA system as a priority one?
Because it will be a, I mean, it's a priority one now.
Right, in that year.
That's always going to be a priority one. That hits a lot of the key things.
I think it's just important to point out that that's a raw number that we're looking at right there.
So, Mr. Lynch, I see, and what I'd like to do, it belongs in the capital plan, but what I heard last year from both the RTM and the public and even from some board members is kind of while understanding that security conversations need to be done in executive session, kind of encapsulating how much we're spending on security each year, so it may actually be a cap X expenditure that like, this is why it shows here, but we might want to find a breakout way so that when we talk to the RTM, when we talk to the public, they understand how much money each year we're spending specifically on security. Because I know, as you said in your opening, that security is a number one goal for us, but if we can find a better way to explain that to the public, I heard a lot of that last budget season, and I'd like to kind of be responsive to that. So that's more of a planning question going forward. Mr. Lynch, also I see, I know last year we had a long talk, and some of us felt strongly about the upgrade of the cafeteria ventilation. You're comfortable with that, especially at Royal, you're comfortable with that currently staying at a three?
Yes. There is a working ventilation system in the cafeteria at all the schools. I do have, I couldn't have said that.
Nope, that's good. You have a period on it.
I couldn't have said that a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
But we've worked diligently. They all work. They all provide fresh air ventilation. They all have windows that are operable for those days when you just want to open a window and turn on the overhead fans that the PTO has installed at this school. So I think that is something that would be redone when the whole building is looked at.
Mrs. McCannan?
If we go back to the five goals in the, I'm getting there, but I'm talking about the high school's security and traffic booth. If we go back to the five goals that we laid out in the facility study from KGND in 2016, number four is building and campus security, and number five is vehicular and pedestrian circulation on campus. That particular project, I think dovetails on both. I'd like to know that we've done all of the work that we need to do in both of those categories before seeing this actually show up on a plan. I'm not sure, there was a lot of discussion last year over what the purpose of this booth was and whether or not it had been thoroughly studied, both in terms of its impact on security and its impact on traffic. So I'm not ready to see it even as a priority two here because I don't think that, at least I as a board member was convinced, that it's necessary on either of those metrics or those.
Yes. So I, what I do think is it's a concept out there, and I think Mr. Lynch spoke to it last year, since it's a concept out there, he didn't want it lost anywhere. So it's a two because it wouldn't show up in a budget unless it's a one. So I would agree, there's probably more work to do on it, but in terms of what we're doing in terms of informing the budget, you would not expect to see a two unless this board moved it up to a one. Makes sense?
That makes sense in terms of twos or ones, but I'm not even sure that it's an item. Like, I don't even know that it rates a two for me, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay. So we could look to have information back from the administration at the next meeting maybe, or at a different security meeting?
Yeah, and I think I'd be as interested to hear from the Board of the perspective of this in terms of at some point, because I'm catching up on the history of this particular thing. So I think it would work from both ways, just a dialogue.
Any other questions? Mr. Rowdy?
Yeah. I think with Mrs. Stein's question, which I agree with, I think that the fluctuations are too great year to year, but I'm having difficulty trying to understand the way it's set up because it's priority one, two, and three in the future years. So how do we determine if this year is priority one, what is next year and the following year if it's all three priorities? So how do we, to try to break that out becomes very difficult because it's only priority one for this year, and then next year it's twos and threes. And how many of those will become, are necessarily going to be priority ones? Or do we assume that priority two automatically jumps to priority one? So that's what I'm struggling with, and I think I would like a little more overview or foresight into that to kind of lay out the plans. Because I think we do need to have some more stability as opposed to going, because we're going 1-6 here next year, even if we take out the HVAC at Holmes, we're still up at 2-7-9, so it's almost double the amount of this year. And then including the 4-2, I mean, you're $7 million, that's a lot of money.
So Mike, do you want to speak to your process? Because some things stay twos, some things stay threes. Do you want to speak a little bit to your process and how you come up with these numbers?
Yeah. When I hit a one, it's an item that it really, it has to be done. It's no longer at the, it would be nice to be done. It's a has-to-be-done item. Some items that I may have thought of putting as a number one this year, I left as a two next year or the year after because I know there's a lot more work going to be done through the facilities department based on that five-year building condition survey. So I didn't, I didn't want to ask for funding, and then because the Board's going to go in another direction in six months from now when they, you know, bring on an architect to look at reimagining libraries, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, that I'm getting approval for funding that I'm not going to spend. So I tried to rein in my spending this year, my request, to stuff that was not going to be affected by any future building plans.
So I think as the Board look, has this come back to it, to Mrs. McCannan's point and to some of the other Mrs. Stein raised, look at your twos, look out, and then Mr. Lynch will be here to explain why he thinks that, and then we can decide if financially we'd like to ask the town to prioritize. But what he's bringing forward is what must, in his opinion, must be done.
And what I think I should mention also is that when, when and if the Board does go in that direction, removing the portables, reimagining libraries, dealing with storage issues, a lot of the really big-ticket items that you're looking at here are going to go away because they're going to be part of a larger bonded capital plan. They're not going to be part of the five-year capital budget. It's really, you know, the reality is it's a one-year part of the operating budget, but because of the size and scope of the work, we call it a capital plan.
So it's really maintaining existing facilities rather than bringing a holistic board to improve facilities?
But what, today I gave one of the architects that's giving prices to rich, I gave a tour of the facilities, and he asked me, he said, "Well, when was the last time?" We were at Hindley School. He said, "When was the last time this building had a comprehensive renovation?" And that's where you go in and, you know, boilers, windows, roofs, addition, all at once. I said, "Never." He goes, "Never?" I said, "No, never."
Mr. Shinie, did I see it, Andrew?
Just two things. It sounds like some number twos automatically move to number one based on the next year.
Sometimes, yeah.
Some, and then some are kind of nice to have, you won't fit into a bigger building plan. So I think you guys answered that. I appreciate that. The second question was, tennis courts I've heard over the years are...
Your mic on?
I don't have a button.
Maybe bring it closer.
So the tennis courts, I've heard are a subpar number in terms of the number of courts. I don't know if that's been brought forward as an issue to the Board or anything, but if we're looking to resurface the courts, maybe look into the number of courts or expansion of the courts. Again, something I've heard over the years. So if we embark on a capital project, if we can expand them at the same time or look to expand them, it might be something we want to look at.
So we would look either, we would look to the high school administration to express that need. That need has not been brought to me as chair, but it doesn't mean that the high school couldn't bring it forward, or if people hearing this conversation feel strongly, they could bring it forward.
Well, I was asked that question.
Oh, okay.
By the, speaking with the athletic...
I don't want to piss up.
No, no, no. I was talking to the athletic director about that issue and the number of courts and, you know, how do you know the correct number? And he said if you had seven courts, that you can hold a FCAC championship tournament at the school. Or a state championship tournament at the school. And I said, "Can you hold all the championships, et cetera, that you need to hold with the five courts you have?" I mean, I came from a school, the high school had 11 courts. The one for that had nine. So I said, "Is five enough?" And he said that the matches take longer. And sometimes, you know, that's a bit of a hardship when you get later in the season and the days get shorter in the fall.
So I think that this part of our conversation is something the administration should bring forward.
Yes. But there wasn't a request from him to expand and build two more. We just had a discussion about it.
Not necessarily. Not necessarily bring forward, but you guys need to discuss a need for us to consider.
But the need, the number was seven, and you have five.
Could I ask a question? You mentioned the back of Middlesex, that road.
Yes.
And I know a lot of that was the take down of the senior center, a lot of heavy equipment really tore up that whole area. I just need to know, it's not a judgment, I'm just curious, how much of that is our responsibility? Where's the town's, just so we know when we're saying this, are we going all the way down to Edgerton? Are we...
No.
What area are you discussing there?
No. If you look out to 22, 23, second line from the bottom, new asphalt road, sidewalk, bus loop, north half of the parking lot, that's the road up from Edgerton.
Oh, okay.
This small amount of money, the 35,000, that's the road that goes from the south parking lot.
Yeah.
Around the back, past the 9/11 memorial, and comes out by the cafeteria.
Okay, great. Thank you for that clarification.
Can I just follow up on that? So you speak to the 360,000, the new asphalt building sidewalk, but you pushed that out an additional year, so you're not seeing that as pressing a need as it was last year when you had it in the report?
I didn't.
Because you moved it, it was in 21, 22 last year when you proposed it?
Yes.
Now it's 22, 23. So I'm seeing it pushed out another year. Just thinking if we're doing an asphalt project and it needs to be done, it doesn't make sense to do them?
Well, what, I did group them that way. I used to try to group asphalt projects around, but working with the town, they get a per-ton price, and I can latch into that price. It doesn't matter how big or how small the project is that I'm doing, so I don't, you know, I'm going to, I have two small projects I'm looking to do next year, the back road at Middlesex and the bus loop and the sidewalk at Hindley. And I'll get the same price that the town is paying. So, you know, and if I did the, everything that needed to be blacktopped in the whole school district all at once, I'd still pay that same per-ton price.
Mrs. McCannan?
Two comments. The first, just picking up on the asphalt blacktop. Kind of the same thing that I was saying earlier, that number five is vehicular pedestrian circulation on campus. I know we've brought up Hindley, the middle school, and DHS, all for looks in terms of how traffic flows, both for cars and pedestrians. So I'd like to know that, I don't want to stop a needed improvement, but, you know, like at Hindley, for example, I don't know that we need to stop that one, but certainly before we do this major middle school project, I'd like to know that we've looked at that.
So this is just the little road behind?
I'm talking about the 360,000.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. I'm not going to stop anything small, but I think, just saying out loud, I want to make sure that we've looked at traffic where we need to before we see large asphalting. The second thing is to ask that in the, going forward and from here on, can we have a five-year capital spend that comes along with this? It's just easier, I think, for the Board in terms of keeping knowledge consistent over time so that we know how much we traditionally spend in this category, and then we can see what fluctuations look like paired with this report.
Did you want capital spend by category?
So let's, let's, let's talk about, does the Board want to see that and how the Board wants to see it? Totally appreciate it. So you're looking for what was our capital budget expenditure for the last five years in the budget? And so generally when we order work, we all just kind of agree that that's work we'd like to see. Personally, I have no problem with it, but I just, the administration often comes back to me and say, "What should I do? One person wanted to see it this way." So are there any other Board thoughts on what they want to see or how they want to see it?
So in this document, you just want to see the last five years? Average total each year?
I'm fine with that.
Total number?
Total?
That's my ask.
You're priority ones, correct? So we wouldn't see priority twos, there would be expenditures.
I think she's asking for what we actually have approved and completed.
And to the budget number each year?
There's no breakdown.
Yeah. So you just want an aggregate expenditure for capital projects each year?
You know, over time, I think we have to think about the plan that was developed by KGND and the upgrade of it, but those of us that were around that was originally rolled out, you know, they did a good job of looking at and saying, "We're doing a good job of maintaining our buildings." They were impressed with the condition of our buildings. But they had thrown out a number at the time that said, "You've got about half a billion dollars, $500 million of real estate here. On average, with the stuff that Mike does, you probably should be spending about $3 million a year to maintain and keep up with your buildings." So to the point of the conversation about leveling it out, it makes sense, seeing what the trends are makes sense, but the broader conversation has to be around what Dennis has started in terms of looking at removing of the portables, rightsizing classrooms, rebuilding libraries. So if that $4 million, two at Holmes, you take that component of it and that overall project at Holmes, in terms of a renovation, a library redesign, adding classrooms could be a $10 or $15 million project. And that's kind of, I think, what Dennis's goal is in terms of trying to look at stuff like that.
So get ready, you're up with the items. Any...
I just wanted to add on that. I agree. I mean, I'm fiscally conservative, so obviously I don't want to spend money where we don't need to, but when I see 1.6, I just, that jumps out to me as not necessarily a good thing because I don't think we're putting the attention we need to into our buildings. But I would rely on you if you're telling us that's all we need to do at this point, but that is a concerning number to me.
No, I agree. Like I said before, I take, I'm taking a little bit of a pause with this because I don't want to ask for money, and then it's not used. And then it becomes, you know, especially if the town bonds it, and then I don't spend it, then, you know, that's really not a position that we want to be in as a school district, so...
So I agree, and I agree with the concept of leveling out, and I like the predictability of it, but we also have to look... but we also have to look year to year, the burden that we're putting on the town, and we haven't seen the proposed operating budget yet. So maybe the best thing to do is, Mr. Lynch, if there are a few things that like, if it was Christmas and your birthday all rolled into one, what things would you move forward? And then, once we receive a full operating budget, we have some discretion to be able to say, "Okay." Because I don't know what Dr. Adley's bringing forward, but when he does, we may decide, based on the amount of sticker shock, where we want to go. So if there are a few options that you said, if there's room and if it's the type of budget where we can level, these things I would move up. That would be great. But the, as I understand it, what you have won is what you feel is necessary to maintain the operation, the, you know, strong operation of the buildings going forward.
That's correct.
Okay. So maybe bring us a few little, if I, if I had room, things that we could consider. Thank you, and we'll see you next time. We will move on to the discussion of district-wide facilities projects. Dr. Adley and Mr. Maroni.
Do you want to go?
No, you're up, Dennis.
I'm up. So the facilities committee met on November 14th, and we discussed two big things. One being the removal of the portables, and, and Dr. Adley had a brilliant idea of combining that with the library's reimagined project. And we took a sense of the meeting vote to move that forward to the board, to ask for, to, to interview some architects, to get a plan developed to, to design that on all this, all of our schools. Our second thing was, was the library, the, the storage facility, the storage units, I guess, at the high school facility in which we still have the, the boxes. And we had put forth money a few years ago, which we took back last year. And again, we would like to request a proposal for an architect to design what our, to, to review our storage needs and design some, some facility or facilities to, to house our storage needs.
Any thoughts, Dr. Adley?
Yes. So we did have the KGND study done, which, which you know, and that was a sort of facilities, sort of condition study. And many of the things that Mike has included were in that actual study. So that continues to feed Michael's model. The KGND study talked about removing the portables. It didn't exactly tell us how to do that and the plan to do that. In all honesty, we have the library reimagined project. There are people in this audience tonight who are willing to fund and looking for opportunities to support that. People in the district have done great work on the libraries reimagined. But when it came to the budget process, it, it came apparent, well, first of all, with a million five just on furniture with nothing else reimagined, is a wee bit problematic. And honestly, people have, have taken it to the level of their expertise, and it needs a greater level of expertise to really reimagine it. And honestly, you need an architect to reimagine it. So before we use any of the school funds, before we use any taxpayers' funds or any of our PTO funds, we would like to see a more comprehensive plan for the libraries reimagined. Given the idea of, of removing the portables, we thought it'd be a good idea to combine because potentially you could create classroom space in a library and have a new library. Why would you just do them separately? And simultaneously, it will, I think it'll also touch on some of the classroom spaces. So we were looking at going out to bid for an architect to come back with, what would that look at the various schools? The libraries reimagined would be all the schools, and then the other ones, the other ones would be just where the portables are in, in the elementary schools. So that's what we brought to the facilities committee to sort of have an architect to look at a comprehensive approach to do that. And actually, we brought forward a, a fee of about $34,000. That was the first projection we got. But we would, we would, we would go along with the bidding processes. So that's the general.
Any board comments or questions?
No, just, I think it's brilliant. I think it's a great, marrying those two things together, I think, is a great idea. And I think it's efficient use of taxpayers' money, so I look forward to hearing more as we move along.
Mr. Dineen?
So it's, the library redesign is specific to all the schools, correct?
Yes.
And then the architects, architectural services are just specific to the schools that have the portables? In terms of what those schools need in terms of classrooms, leaving Ox Ridge out of it. Correct?
So I like this idea, and I hate to be the naysayer, but I haven't heard much about libraries reimagined and why libraries and what the goal is for the libraries. I understand portables, so I think, at least from my own opinion, I need to understand this re-imagination project. I know two years ago we had an update on it, but we haven't heard anything since then. And so I'm all for them, but they are now, I need to know the priority and why and how they fit into the school plan. Portables certainly are the highest priority, so if we can accomplish another project while doing it, I just would like to understand why that's the other project we're doing rather than classroom spaces or something else. So I would just look for more information on what libraries reimagined means. And that is not to take away from all the good work. I just need an update on it. I haven't heard it in two years. That's me.
That's fine. I was working on the assumption to some degree that everybody kind of was on board with the library reimagined. But if it's not, and we need more information and an update historically, what has been done to date, where we are, we're, we're happy to provide that.
I just feel that would be good because I feel like whatever this is, it's a big nut, and I can understand people saying, "Why portables and libraries?" And if the answer is portables is, is the main need and we can satisfy the library need, but it's been two years since the board's heard about libraries reimagined, and I'd like to hear some more about it.
Can I just talk about what we discussed at the committee? And, you know, when you're looking at the elementary schools with the portables and looking at a large space that might be reimagining, the view was have a comprehensive look at the entire, basically the large space in the facilities. That you might think that you could, as Dr. Adley said, make classroom space out of the existing library and then figure out another space within the building or external that you would build a, build a library in these three facilities. So that was a thought process of marrying these two. I'm new too. I didn't, I thought this re-imagine thing was well along. But if you're gonna look at those three schools with portables, you're gonna want to look at the entire facility.
Yeah.
You might have, you might be able to marry the two concepts together.
I just want to understand cafeterias, libraries. I know at one point you guys, the group went to Google. I know, like, what's our goal for these libraries reimagined? Because I imagine we're gonna have to say to the architects, "Our goal is to achieve X." And I'd like the board to kind of hear what that goal is as well.
Fine. Do you want to... I think it's fair to say that we haven't updated the Board of Education since, we did not update Board of Ed last year. So if we feel like we need to come back, those reports have not shifted. We have our school-based teams. We have our district-based team that met. In fact, Ms. McCammon was a part of that group. We're glad to come back and revisit that for the benefit of new board members or if we just need a refresher on what that project looks like in scope and then, I think, conceptually. What we've really struggled with over the past year has not been the vision. The vision actually hasn't changed. It's the implementation, and it, just as Dr. Adley mentioned, when you feel like you're spending a million and a half dollars in a space, but yet you still have a wall in the middle of the room that does not allow for some of the pieces that we believe are of value, then we felt like we needed to take a step back. So I'm glad to bring that. I would hope that it wouldn't prevent this, but I'm glad to bring that group back here to revisit that, that same work that we did a year ago. Conceptually, it has not changed.
Okay. I think a refresher on that would be good, even if it's reissuing those documents because if we are talking about something like a million dollars on furniture, I think we kind of need everybody.
We can reshare the report and...
Just a comment. I mean, I think this conversation we're having mirrors the conversation we had on facilities previously. Instead of looking at things ad hoc, but to do things in a comprehensive fashion. And we have different initiatives here that we're looking at. This is going to efficiently use all the resources in the physical structure as well as bolstering security in an integrated plan. So I think just as we're trying to look overall comprehensively, I think this is a great example of trying to maximize the efficiencies and minimize the costs.
I mean, if you're looking out for me, I can just look at the report. I don't need a whole news. You, you did say nothing has changed.
Nothing has changed in concept now. So we, I'd be glad to reshare that report and reshare that presentation with Dr. Adley, and he can share it with the Board of Education.
Yeah.
We, oh, I just will add to that. We do have school-based reports that are very specific to the needs of their school based on the spaces that they had at that given time, but I'm glad to reshare that without a doubt.
Yeah, so my memory was that the team came and presented, and that the school-based teams at that time were being established and kind of saying what their needs were. And so I think that's going to be really important, understand what it was, even to direct an architect. And so if we're gonna put money behind an architectural study, I think we need to know what we're asking the architect to accomplish. We can just reissue and share it throughout the board. I just haven't seen it in long enough that it's a lot of money to put forward without knowing where we're going yet.
Any other comments or questions?
Mrs. McCammon? On the school-based reports, are, is that something you would really be using or is that something you'd be delivering to the architect for him to look at conceptual, or her, excuse me, to look at conceptually, the, the point being that, you know, we've set out the overall framework, and perhaps we need to look at what the specifics are per school?
So the framework for each of this, for the district level was really the same for the school-based teams, just as you're describing, Ms. McCammon. And then what changed in those reports was based on that space. And so this is where I think it will be helpful to have the architect not only see the actual school-based reports, but also meet with the school-based teams to help understand conceptually what some of the challenges that they were facing when taking, when actualizing, bless you, when actualizing the vision that the district-level group that had many of folks involved in bring to fruition into their schools just simply based on the spaces and the dynamics that were there and the influences, whether it was SRBI classrooms being part of their spaces or OT spaces. All of the, the schools have different dynamics, and so that has been the, the struggle. Since then, they've, they've continued to do work. They've looked at different buckets, whether those were instructional, building, what could be literally purchased right now and already make shifts instructionally. But then, when we started to look at all of that, it became very big, and yet we were still running into some of the challenges of not being able to actualize some of the components that were a part of that district plan.
I think that some of the, some of the smaller sort of like ed spec sort of thing, the teaching and learning expectations we have, they will get informed by the architect too. So it's a wee bit of a yin and yang.
Any other board comments or questions?
Well, where are we staying on the process now, I guess is your question.
I think we'll have a reissuing of the reports, and I think we need to review those and decide if there's conversations. I think this isn't on for action, so it needs to come back anyway. And so over the next two weeks, any questions that come up? And then we'll discuss it next meeting and decide if we're ready for action on it.
Yep.
So I guess to that point, and maybe you'll get clarity once you meet with the architects though. So the goal of the architects too is to look at Royal and say, "Here's the Royal campus. We remove the portables." You're having a conversation with the architects as to what you feel you need in that school once the portables are taken out?
Yes.
Okay. Which may or may not include the right sizing of classrooms or the cafeteria.
So this is my point.
I mean, I, I, I feel like, I love the concept of what you're doing, but I feel like we're at a juncture now where it still feels a little piecemeal. And if you go back to the original five-year capital plan on some of these schools, you've got Hindley where the proposal for the library was to build a new one, reopen the front of the school, and reconfigure that school, and get it back to where the front was on near Water Lane and stuff like that. So I just worry, are we, are we thinking broad enough while we have the opportunity to kind of, kind of build out the plan for the next five years? And those three schools, we're building a new school in Ox Ridge. Tokenique's a relatively new school, maybe needs some minor construction. But is it a point in time where we take a look at those three schools? And then based on what comes back for those three schools in terms of roofing, HVAC, right sizing classrooms, right sizing cafeterias, getting rid of the portables, reimagining the library, and, and having a, Hindley's gonna cost 20, Homes is gonna cost 30, and then prioritizing that for the town to present it and, and look out over five or 10 years as to, once we start building Ox Ridge, what are the next couple of projects?
So you want a facilities plan, right?
Yes, he's being more explicit at what I'm hinting at. I'm not entirely sure we're not looking at an updated plan.
That's where the plan was supposed to go. We were trying, I think, to satisfy a lot of things with Ox Ridge. We called it the ripple effect. You get Ox Ridge built, you can eliminate the portables. But I think, you know, if spending 35 is gonna get rid of the portables and reimagine the libraries, is spending 65 or 70 gonna get us to the next step in this plan? That gives us that projection of, "Hey, guys, we got $80 million we have to spend to get these schools where they need to be. How are we gonna do that? What's the timeline we're gonna do it? And at the end of the day, this is what we're gonna accomplish, and these are the great school buildings we're gonna have."
So Mr. Dineen's being far more explicit than I was, but I appreciate it. Because I really, I, I'm all for libraries reimagined, and I know how much work is going on. But I'm wondering if it's not time that we look at, what are the explicit needs? And if some school needs a cafeteria, are we instructing the architects to look at libraries reimagined and portables when what they really need is a gym and a cafeteria and outside classrooms? So are we not saying, "We need an update of the facilities plan and needs, and we want parity among services and libraries and stuff like that?" But some schools have significant issues, and we need to start prioritizing those as a ma, an update of a master plan that's now five years old, six years old? So that, that's kind of where I am. I don't want to tie us to libraries.
I balance that with you being, I balance that with you being new, but this has been a lot of conversation that I personally think with this conversation, we have to bring it to a head. And we can't keep dancing around it, whether it's 50, 60, 70, or 80 million dollars. It is what it is. It's not to say we're gonna spend it, but it gives everyone an understanding of what the plan could be, and then we've got to figure out how to execute on it. Financing costs are cheap right now. The Board of Finance will weigh in on this. And there's just, I think it's a better planning process. It's basically three schools when you think about it. We're building new. Tokenique is relatively new. But take the next step beyond just the library reimagined and removing the portables.
And we just heard about almost $8 million in projects at two of those schools. So I think we're going to be faced with substantial needs at especially these three elementary schools. So I, I, I've talked about this for a while now. I do think that I would be in favor of revisiting that master, master facilities plan just so we see the impact of Ox Ridge and what the trickle effect is on that and what the real needs are for these schools.
I think you're missing the priority here, hence the portables.
I, I agree.
You guys keep dancing around this issue.
Nobody's, nobody's dancing around portables. What we're trying to say is...
Okay, well, I heard re-imagine libraries three times and portables zero times, and this was...
Actually, Mr. Seeny, that's incorrect. I started with portables being the priority. My question is, only that we haven't heard about the libraries in over a year, and that portables are the priority. And so to tie them necessarily together, I would like portables and then any other significant need, inclusive or exclusive of libraries to be looked at. Portables, everyone has said for as long as we've been looking at this, and Ox Ridge is a trickle, is the priority.
And that's what I meant by trickle effect, because we know that the portables will be eliminated.
Listen, yes, the portables.
Excuse me, that, but when Ox Ridge is built, those portables, especially at Royal, will be eliminated. So that is part of what we need to take into account while we're doing this. Because libraries imagined and coupling that, as I said in the beginning, with the elimination of the portables is a great concept. But we have a lot of issues that need to be addressed, and, you know, this can happen at the same, simultaneously at the same time. But we do need to revisit that master facilities plan.
Mr. Brown?
Just to, to a point Dr. Adley had made earlier, you talked about sort of the give and take or the back and forth that goes on as part of this process. I mean, if you're just looking at the portables and we're just looking at the libraries, wouldn't the architect come back and say, "Oh, by the way, isn't that part of the process?"
I think he would, yes.
Well, it depends on the scope, you get.
Right.
Yeah.
I've been taking the architects around, and I show them the second floor of Hindley and Royal and the undersized classrooms. I show them the disjointed main office at, at Homes. I show them all the things that we've looked at in the plan so that, you know, they don't come back to us and say, "Oh, by the way, I've already, you know, I took a guy around today." You know, we walked in... a guy around today. You know, we walked in all the boiler rooms, walked around the outside of the building, we did everything but cook on the roof, and I was ready to go, he didn't want to go. So, I mean, we're, we're showing what you're asking, we're, we're doing that, and then we're asking them to give us a price for the portable and the library reimagining, so as they're giving us a price and thinking about how to accomplish those items, they've got these other things in the back of their mind that they know have to be done.
And so if they have these things that they know need to be done, do those come forward as part of the process or they just stop, or we have to-
No, I'm sure in their report back to Dr. Adley and, and Mr. Rudolph, they'll mention them, and, you know, we also gave them all a copy of the existing five-year plan, and we gave them a copy of CAD drawings of all the buildings, so they're well armed to, you know, go to the next step.
So if we had a focus on just say the portables, we wouldn't be losing sight of the bigger picture. That would be-
That's exactly correct.
Okay.
So I think what Mr. Danine and I are asking for, quite frankly, is to update the facilities plan with portables being the priority so that we say it explicitly, but that, what we need to see is the needs of our facilities, and it's been a long time since we've done that, and everyone in this town is poised to do it, so fix the portables and tell us what our schools need.
What do you mean by fix the portables?
Get rid of them.
Oh, thank, well, I need a plan to get rid of them.
Get rid of them, and as the, the architects go through, it's nice that they're giving you, but I think this board would like to be explicit. We'd like to address the needs of the schools, so we need to know them, and they haven't been looked at in five years.
Well, three, right?
Three years, right. I think that's the point. The plan was, plan is a five-year plan developed in 2016. That takes us to 2021, so why, and I, I don't understand why we're looking to redo another plan when we already have a current plan and it's laid out in there. I think what we have to understand is, we can go and do all of this work and, and come up with another plan and do a, a great facilities plan. It's going to take us a long time, not a long time, it's going to take us time to do that. Portables is a need today, and, and I appreciate your point, Tara, is that we, you know, I don't want to spend good money after bad, but I think we have to come up with a plan to get rid of those portables as soon as possible, and then we worry about other things after, and, and to Mr. Lynch's point, hopefully they have an idea that what we do will not have to be torn down to, to reim, to, to redo a different part of the school, but I think we have to move forward.
If you could, so I guess maybe I'm not being clear tonight. No, I, I would, my own opinion here is no one is saying, don't move forward. What I'm worried is tying it to libraries reimagined when the board hasn't heard about it in so long, so the portables need to be gone.
Yes, that's where this started, yes.
Yeah, so tying libraries reimagined is great if there's an economy of scale there, but what I want to know is, how do we make our facilities the safest and the best educational experience for our kids? To me, asking an architect to do anything else is, is kind of like trying to fit in the wrong size shirt, get rid of the portables and tell us the condition of our schools, but portables are the first priority, and if I was unclear about that, my apologies, but 100% I would like to see those gone as soon as they can be gone in the best way possible.
So do we remove the libraries from the mandate and just have them ask?
To me, they're ancillary, but, I mean, there's nine of us. To me, the libraries reimagined are an ancillary part of this. The portables are the number one.
If you're going to do the libraries reimagined at any point, you're going to need to get an expert in to do it, and it just would be short-sighted not to, to, to at least consider them together, that's all.
I think they can be part of the instructions, but that's fine.
I just, for Mr. Lynch, so if we had a focus on the portables, would you say with a mind towards future proofing or further planning, or how would you integrate that concept? You know, we want these done today, but we want to make sure we do in a way that's smart and provides for structures that we don't have to tear down, but can integrate into a future plan, like, how would you express that to an architect, or if I'm expressing it at all in a way that makes any sense?
What, what we have been doing when we take them around is we're showing them everything that could possibly be something impacted with, let me give you a Holmes, okay, just, there's two portables that come on. So when we walked through the building and we saw the library and the size of the gymnasiums and no storage for the gyms and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, it was like, look, if you're going to take these two music spaces away, you can pretty much figure that you're going to have to build three or four classrooms and four to six, 150 to 250 square foot spaces for OTPT offices, psychologists, et cetera. So that's how we would do it at each of the buildings, and I told them, like, we're putting a roof on Holmes, and we have this heating and ventilating need of about $4,000, and we went through the history of the boilers and the control systems, and so we did everything like that, and we did it for all the buildings. We went to Royal. I brought them upstairs, or her, and I showed them the undersized classrooms. I showed them the undersized cafeteria down in the basement, again, a small gym, a small common room, but unique, it's the only elementary that has its own separate common room space, you know, so I showed them everything inadequate and good at the buildings, you know, like the 1996 additions were, they're right-sized classrooms, they're well lit, they're well ventilated, they have great electricity, windows, et cetera, but when they put them on the, the buildings, you know, 40-year-old buildings, all they did was put the addition on and put a sprinkler system in. They didn't look at windows, doors, roofs. They didn't look at all the other stuff they should have, so we don't want to fall into that same trap again.
So, so the process of saying, we want the portables gone, a natural part of the listed dependencies that these have to change as a result of that work, and that can be anticipated so the work isn't redundant, so you build on something that has to come down five years later to meet, that's part of the natural process.
Get rid of these two portables, you know, that are 1,500 square feet, and I'm going to need 5,000 square feet plus new roofs plus renovated heating and ventilating syst, yeah, exactly.
Mrs. Ritchie.
I just want to, you know, the concept is brilliant, as I said in the beginning. The issue I see is, I'm just going to take Hindley. We have five portables and one library, so putting five classrooms into the library is probably not going to solve the problem, so the problem is not going to go away, just, like, this is just one phase in the process, is that correct? I mean, I'm hearing a laundry list of issues at these schools that aren't going to go away with this, so we're, it just, we're not going to get five modular classrooms into one library.
I don't think that was the example. We're looking at two major spaces on the campus that need to be looked at and studied, and you will never get five classrooms in a library.
No, but, so I, I just, I, I just, I want to be clear that that's-
You might get two classrooms in a library and three new classrooms in a new library.
To be clear, as a board member, I have yet to see the need, and I know a lot of work's gone into the benefit of a library, but I've yet to see that that's a priority need. That's my feeling. Mrs. McCammon.
Just in the goals and objectives that we signed off on for the year, it lists identifying contract with an architect to, to actualize design specifications outlined in the reimagining libraries report for each library space. It talks about working with BOA, PTO, and Darian Community, Darian Community Foundation to identify potential funding sources, develop 2021 budget proposal to fund renovation of library spaces. We all signed off on this, so if we want to, you know, talk a little bit about, you know, broadening the scope, I think, fine, but we've all agreed that this was a priority and we, we voted on it, so.
So that's why I started the conversation with, because I think when we agreed on that, we expected some sort of update, and so I just want a reissuing of the reports, an update on where we are, why is it a priority? Because it's in there, so let's, let's hear where you are on the work. I haven't heard anything since, for, for two years on it, and we have, we don't have the same technology director who was spearheading it before, so I just want to hear where we are before we tie it, because I do think portables are the most important thing, so I don't want to tie another project to it.
I think we probably should have talked about that at goals and objectives time though. I think that's the difficulty. We now want to shift.
Well, I think as goals and objectives go through, we hear updates on goals and objectives, so all the original request was a reissuing or a re-update on the project, so we know where it stood because it's been two years.
Great.
Mr. Danine.
Look, I think in all the conversation and to the point of what just Mike Lynch said, you get to the same conclusion. We've kind of talked through it all, but at the end of the day, if you look at Hindley and they're going to remove the portables, the plan is what has to be done to that school, whether it's four classrooms or five classrooms. You're going to look at the library redesign, and then what Mike has done is brought them into the fact, we need new windows, we need a new roof, we need a new boiler, whatever, so my goal was, as long as that's all being taken into consideration with the priority that we set out of removing the portables, then fine, that's where we're getting there. I just find it hard to believe for $35,000 they're going to do that type of assessment.
So this will come up on the next agenda if the administration can do a little bit of work, maybe reissue, issue those reports so we understand where we are in the process and we can pick up the conversation from there. Sound good?
Unless you want to push it back down to facilities, if you don't think this is the right proposal.
I, I just want a reissuing of the report, which is the original request, so we can have an update on where we are, because it's been a long time.
In fairness, right, this was going to come through a budget process for the library reimagined, so you may have heard it through that, so it just seemed fitting to, to bring it to the, the finance, or sorry, the facility sub, subcommittee to consider it, so.
We will move on to an update and transfer on the funds for the Hindley School window project.
Okay, we hit the Hindley School window project to be phased in over multiple years, and in discussions last year, made sense to do it all at once, which meant two things. One was that I would not be asking for an appropriation in this year's budget of the $167,000. If you looked at last year's budget book, I don't know who does that, you would see that for this year, I was going to ask for $167,000. I'm not asking for that because I don't have to, but what I do have to do is transfer some remaining funds within capital budget from budget codes where I've completed the project and haven't expended all the money. Three of those four codes were replacing the windows at Hindley. The money just wasn't put in a P O, like maybe that year we might have used that to pay the architect or to pay the environmental consultant, so, and then the last part is, we had money left over from changing out the switchgear at the Ox Ridge School, which was the, the engineer had budgeted at $230,000, and it was 70 something thousand dollars because we, we did not have to change the main electric feed coming in from Mansfield. We did not have to change the transformer. We just had to change the switchgear, which was, so, so there's a surplus there. So if we take these surplus items, then it allows the town to zero out the Hindley window account instead of having it at a negative number, and it zeroes out some of these other accounts and allows, it's a bookkeeping. I'm allowing them to close the things up, but I present it to the Board of Ed, and if you give me permission, then I go to the Board of Finance on the 17th.
So it's not on for action, Dr. Adley, so we would need to make an amendment to the agenda if you need a voted approval from us. Does anyone have any questions, and then we'll take up the amendment if we need to. Does anyone have any questions on the transfer report? No, so if you, do you-
Move to amend the agenda to include this item.
Action, action item. Thank you. A second. Mr. Burke, all in favor?
Give Deb a minute.
Wasn't expecting it.
Not on a minute, I can tell.
Yeah.
Can I make that unanimous? Okay, and then if there's no questions, may I make a motion to approve going forward with, to the Board of Finance with the memory and, um, from Mike Lynch dated November 20th, 2019. May I have a motion in favor? Mr. Maroney, Mr. Danine, all in favor? We'll give Deb another minute, sorry.
That's okay.
Is that good?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Lynch. A discussion on the October 2019, 2020 financial report and possible action on budget, proposed budget transfers. Mr. Rudolph and Mrs. Ritchie.
Burke, okay. Uh, so it's the monthly financial report through October. We are doing the report monthly. All right, we'll start again. Uh, so it is the monthly financial report through October. We are doing the reports monthly going forward. Through the end of October, we are forecasting a favorable balance of 388,652, or 0.39% of the budget. The general education RCs do forecast a surplus of just shy of $400,000. The special education RCs forecast a slight negative variance of 10,891. Uh, we do report out on five categories, salaries, operating fixed equipment and revenue. Uh, the positive variance for salaries is 414,591. Uh, primarily, the savings are in salary savings for 144,000. Uh, we do have a negative projection for custodial overtime of just over $28,000, favorable balance and column change of 57,250. Budget control does remain untouched at 263,360. Uh, we are projecting a slight negative forecast for contracted services for special education of $22,000. Moving to the operating section, uh, we are forecasting a favorable balance of just shy of $37,000. Uh, the consulting services, um, we do have a transfer for the board to approve of 75,000 that makes up the 116,000. We did include in the forecast a placeholder for the facility study that we just talked about. Uh, there is no transfer related to that, but we are at least projecting that in the forecast should we move forward with it. Uh, there's a slight forecasted surplus in supplies. We do expect legal fees within special ed to trend to the negative, though we do have some positive areas in transportation within special education, and between tuition public and non-public, relatively flat between the two categories. Uh, within fixed, we are forecasting a positive 109,906. Uh, the primary areas being utilities of a little over $18,000, workers' compensation of 44,832. However, if the board does approve the transfer, in the next report you would see this go down. Uh, property insurance of $7,400, general liability insurance of just over 11,000, student accident insurance of 16,522, and then unemployment insurance of 10,660. Uh, moving to revenue, we are forecasting excess costs to come in less than budget by about $174,000. Uh, this amount is based on the filing that is due December 1st. Uh, the district does have a threshold of $98,683. Um, it is important to note, last year, the district did get about 3.4 million dollars. Of that 3.4 million dollars, nine students aged out of district, and so we can't collect reimbursement for them. Uh, that is about a million dollars. Um, there is another filing that we will have to submit in March, so we can capture any changes that could materialize between now and March, which could change that projection going forward. Uh, total revenue is forecasted to be about $172,000 less. Um, so as I mentioned, we do have two transfers for board approval today. Uh, there is $7,000 for consulting services within RC 23, Darian Summer School, and then $75,000 for the strategic plan that the board did vote on at this last meeting. Um, as we mentioned at the last meeting, we would recommend taking those funds from, I would call the Kirmah accounts, workers' compensation, property insurance, and general liability insurance.
Any questions? Mrs. Ritchie.
Not really a question. I just wanted to go back to the excess cost. Hopefully everybody had a chance to review the memo because Rich gives an excellent description. I just would encourage everybody to use that information to inform our discussions as we move ahead to budget season, because, um, we made some adjustments last year, but it turns out we, you know, maybe should have reconsidered that, so I think as we move forward, we should really, um, take into account those adjustments, and I, um, I think that was it, that's all I had to say. So I think we had a good discussion at the, the Finance Committee regarding all of this information, but if anyone has any questions.
Any questions? So may I have a motion to approve the proposed budget transfers as outlined by Mr. Rudolph? Mrs. McCammon and Mr. Burke, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you all, and thank you to the work of the committee. Um, an update on the 2020, 2021 budget, Dr. Adley.
So we're, we're, we obviously have met with all the RCs, done all the, all the legwork. I'm not really here to disclose my hand completely, so just before a warrant. So we're, we're basically just over a week ago, so to speak, in terms of making some decisions. Um, essentially, uh, there's a couple of variables that are out there. One would be the health. Uh, we need the confirmation of the health. Currently it's sitting at 8%, which is, is trending higher than, than expected, uh, so that will have a big influence on the budget. Uh, continuing of special education spending will be an indicator also that you will see. Um, some mentioned that you've, you've heard tonight in terms of, in the capital plan, so I use, clearly this is not in the operating, but I use them sort of, uh, cause, to describe that these things are in the budget, whether it's capital or whether it's operating. You'll hear about safety, you've heard about the strategic planning, um, and basically you'll hear about, uh, the technology program that continues the one-to-one and professional learning for staff around mathematics and STEM. You're not going to hear anything too radical, to be honest with you. Um, I have a, actually, we significantly nut to crack, to be honest, in the next couple of weeks because of, of the way the trend of some of these, um- of weeks because of the way the trend of some of these areas are coming out, particularly the healthcare. So with healthcare, with OPEB that needs to be finalized in the next couple of weeks, those are big, sometimes those are big swings. So those are, those are some of the things, again, you're not going to hear a big initiative around a master program or personnel, but those are, tends to be the areas where the budget is focused on at the moment.
Any questions? Although, we don't have much to question yet, just a little heads up. All right.
Yeah.
No questions? All right. Thank you, Dr. Adley. We'll move on to the presentation of the five-year budget projections. Dr. Adley and Mr. Rudolph.
So my understanding that this is, this is a document that is used for the state-of-the-town meeting, which is coming up shortly, December 9th, I believe that is, and is utilized both by the Board of Finance Chairman and also Board of Education Chair. So this is, this is a new process for me, not that it's new for the five-year, but it's new in the sort of timing because we really haven't finished up this year's budget, and we're projecting this forward. So when you look at the first year, I don't want anybody to freak out in the sense of what number is down there. It would seem that when this has been done in the past, that these projections, that ultimately, the budget comes in just over a 1% below what the projection is. I don't want you to hold that to me either, but that's just going on past precedent of kind of what the budgets actually came in versus what was projected over the years. So with, Richard and I, we put this together, and basically, the big buckets, you can see that it's around salaries, enrollment changes, so we've accommodated those. This is basically a base budget, right, without significant additions or deductions being made, staff turnover. We've also incorporated the saving from the teacher contract as reflected in this, operating fixed equipment and revenue. Those are, those are the main things that, the main categories that we have, we have outlined here. If I asked Rich, Rich, would you just go through the actual PowerPoint for the board for me, please?
So as Dr. Adley mentioned, the purpose of the five-year projection is to provide a financial snapshot. It does not represent the budget that Dr. Adley will present in another month or so. We also did not include any new programs or initiatives as the strategic plan is only just underway. So this is the next slide. So as with every multi-year model, there's a number of assumptions that are included that help you to develop what that forecast will be. So we start with salary assumptions. So the model takes the current collective bargaining agreements, factors them in, and then pushes them through for the five years, where there are not collective bargaining agreements. We do have some unsettled contracts ending at the end of this year, and then not all the contracts obviously are in place for the full five. We make certain salary assumptions that would be included within the model. There are no changes, both additions or subtraction to staff that are factored in, other than to maintain current class size guidelines based on the 10-year enrollment forecast by Maloney-McBroom that was presented at the last meeting. The 10-year enrollment report prepared by Maloney-McBroom for the November Board of Ed meeting was used to determine the elementary class sections with the current high-class limit used to determine the number of sections. We did include staff turnover of 24 teachers going from a master's 18 to a master's 14 under the current DEA contract, and then assumed the DEA contract for the last two years of the five-year agreement. We did factor in budget control at four teachers, and though, though we did not reduce budget control in any of the outer years, where there did call for staffing adjustments due to class size. We did not include any savings associated with the change in workload from going from four and a half to five that would be achieved through attrition, though the savings that we would achieve in fiscal year '21 that are the known savings are factored into the projection. Health insurance, as Dr. Adley mentioned, is based on the current census of employees that we have now, with annual 8% increases in premium every year for the five years. Where class size indicates an additional F T E or a reduction in F T E, we assumed an employee plus one package associated with that F T E. Dental insurance is assumed at 2.5% annually. We did not make any potential change for municipal contribution for T R B. There was discussion in the past few years at the state of municipalities paying a portion of T R B. That remains unknown and is not factored into this forecast. Looking at operating assumptions, the operating expenses for the elementary R C.'s are based on the allocation of resources that is familiar with the budget. We did use Maloney-McBroom's projections and assumed those enrollment figures to create an elementary allocation of resources for each of those five years. For out-of-district tuition, as students age out based on their grade level, we did age out those expenses, but we did assume new outplacements would occur each year. And then we did build in a contractual increase for software, but no new software within the five years. Moving to fixed assumptions, the transportation is based on the current Board of Ed policy, and the contract with first student assumes the same level of increases in future years. And where we have no contract, we assume the same level of increases that we're seeing currently. FICA expenses are based on the current census of employees with the assumed salary increases. We did not change the Social Security payroll cap of $132,900. The new mortality rates for the town pension valuation have not been finalized and thus are not factored into the five-year projection. We did assume changes to fuel oil prices of about 10 cents per gallon over the current estimated locked-in rate for next year. Electricity continues to increase at 5% annually due to consumption, and then workers' compensation would increase a net of 5% each of the five years. The equipment assumption is based on the replacement cycle of devices that we have for the next four years with an assumption for the fifth year to build our equipment budget. For revenue, when appropriate, if a student, we anticipate aging out over the course of those five years, is excess cost eligible. We did reduce the revenue within excess cost for what would be 70% of the assumed expenditure for those tuition, for those students. For E L P. tuition, we assumed an increase of 2.5% each year for five years. We did assume the technology shared service agreement remains in place with the current staff that are in place, and assume salary increases for each of those five years. And then we assumed growth in summer school revenue of about 1.5%. Based on Maloney-McBroom's enrollment projections, K-5 enrollment is anticipated to grow about 27 students over the course of those five years. That would result, based on the class size guidelines, of a net increase of four F T E at the elementary level. However, we'd have declining enrollment at the secondary level, which would result in a net reduction of three F T E over the course of those five years for a net change of one. So as Dr. Adley mentioned, the projections historically have been higher than what the budget has ultimately been approved at, and it does range a little bit over 1% each year. So last year, the projection was for a 3.38% increase, and the budget was just over 2%. So as you'll see on the next slide, we are assuming a 3.63% projection for fiscal '21, going down to fiscal '22, down to 3.3, spiking to 3.94, largely due to an increase in F T for enrollment, then dropping to 3.34, and then 3.13 at the last of the five years.
So thank you. I will say with some context, I know this report engendered a lot of conversation last year in what we were doing and what we were approving. In fact, I think in some of the projections, we were seeing 5% and 6% increases, which we knew, quite frankly, at least the combination there, never felt that they were going to improve, given the fiscal state, the state is in a six-year projection. We didn't, we were concerned about improving it. So I thank you. I talked for a long time about the concerns last year to the administration this year, so thank you. I feel like this report's far more comprehensive. And as you'll notice, this is no longer a voted approval to the Board of Finance. It's more of a conversation with the Board of Finance, so they understand what the assumptions are, so they can inform their comments. So with that said, comments or questions to the administration? Mr. Sini?
Just one on the outplacement. I understand the way you calculated the diminishing outplacement dollars. How did you assume the new student, is it a similar ratio that you've had in the past, or?
So we, we have certain students that we have as like a watch list that could potentially, I took an average of what those costs would be to assume a dollar amount. The students that are aging out that would be excess cost eligible are a higher dollar amount, so it affects your revenue. But I did not have any new student outplacement reaching that, that level. It was more of an average, roughly what your N C E P would be. Thank you.
So I just want to make sure we, for anyone listening, don't ally excess cost in outplacement as if they are necessarily the same thing.
They're not one of the same.
You could be an excess cost, a child who qualifies for excess cost and be within district.
Correct.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you so much, and we'll look forward to inform the Board of Finance on kind of the assumptions going forward. With that, we will move on to further discussion and possible action on proposed revisions to Board of Education's policy 9310, 3050, and 5820. Mrs. Sion and Mr. Burke?
All right. So this group had this before them last meeting. There are essentially no, there are no changes to what we looked at last time, other than looking at the question, I think it was Member Brown had mentioned the may versus shall language in paragraph 3B, and 3B, and then 3B 3. I had communication with our board attorney centered on the usage of that verbiage. There was concern that with regard to allowing public comment, if we put the language "there shall be public comment," it would not, it would be not consistent with the actual law, which does not mandate that there be public comment. We do that as a practice. We always intend to do that, but the reality is, is there might at some point be exigent circumstances under which we could not have public comment, and then we wouldn't want to be outside of the language. So it's felt an abundance of caution that we would leave that language as may as opposed to shall. That was on 9310, and I don't think there was any further commentary or questions about 3050 or 5820.
All right. Any comments or questions on those policies? Mr. Sini?
Just a question. I know the practice has been before and after, but if there was a meaningful item that we wanted to hear public comment during a meeting, this would allow in the middle of a meeting, you, you could assign a public comment in the middle of a meeting too, if you so wish.
I mean, that's an agenda item?
Yeah, it's an, it's an agenda item.
It's not prohibitive.
I think often what we remind people is it's a meeting held in public, not of the public.
Understood. But I've seen times where you've called up Mr. Zagrodsky around an issue or something mid-meeting, so that would allow us to do that, right?
Typically, those are invited guests, which is how we try to handle that, but yes, it would exist.
Yeah, thank you.
And on budget meeting, we also suspend that rule. So may I have a motion? You want to take them as a batch individually? Okay, yep. So may I have a motion to approve the proposed revisions to policies 9310, 3050, and the proposed new policy of 5820? Mrs. Stein, seconded by Mr. Maroney, all in favor? And that is unanimous. Thank you all. We move forward to action items. Any personnel items, Mrs. Sion?
We do have two longstanding employees retiring. They gave us notice, and they're on the P A R for your information tonight.
Okay. So may I have a motion to approve the P A R dated November 26, 2019? Mr. Maroney and Mr. Dineen, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Public comment.
Jack Davis, 197 Hoyt Street. I'm in the middle of cooking, so I'll make this real quick. There was a comment earlier about what was operating, what was capital, but last year, F and B changed its entire approach to the budget and how we present it. And part of it is, is that we realize that our boards control the numerator, and the market controls the denominator, which is the grand list. And so what we've started doing last year is we take the requests that each of the boards have made, and we reconcile it based upon how we're paying for it. And it was also last year, if we looked at the Board of Ed's budget, on capital, it looked like the Board of Ed increased, but the reality is, is that many things were bonded in the prior year. So the bonding can be done by the Board of Finance. There's also general funds that we used last year for the first time based upon their change in policy of 500. There's also the reserve fund for non-recurring expenses, which has contingency, which is where you're going to request on the windows, which stands at about 800,000. So we reconcile that. So to say, oh, this really isn't operating, this isn't capital, yes, it is. So I will forward those slides to Deb's to be shared with the board, because I think it's important that you understand, because at the end of the day, after all your board's vote, I'm presenting it to the R T M, and so you should see how we're going to present it from F and B. The other thing is, and this isn't to steal anybody's thunder from our state-of-the-town, but as you may be aware, that we paid down $1.5 million by calling certain bonds. They would do in, to be paid in July. So when you're looking going into next year's budget, and we usually use about $85,000 to determine what a basis point is, that's already a 17 to 18 basis point reduction going into the budget. So while I am cognizant that we do like to have our capital be spread out, we also want it to be spent wisely. But we also don't like to see maybe a tax decrease this year to see a major tax increase the next year. That doesn't do any of our boards any good. But the other thing to say is, is that while the Board of Ed may be looking at some of their capital, remember, we have a Peter and a Paul here. So if the Board of Ed may be down on capital, that may mean that we go to the town side and say, well, you can move forward because there's things there, as opposed to just going. The last thing that I did want to say, and it was a very spirited discussion on the portables, which I agree have to be done, but there's always a concern in this town that sometimes we fix the portables, and then five years later, because we didn't address all those other needs that we needed in all those other schools, we're spending a lot more money to fix that. So while I appreciate bringing things together and the importance of getting those portables out as quickly as possible for a lot of reasons other than just security, the fact is, is that from my perspective, I can't speak for the committee, but from my perspective, I'd like to know what it really costs to fix each one of those schools, and whether or not we do it in two stages or three stages makes more sense than just, I'm fixing the portables, oh, and by the way, we have to fix the office, we have to fix this, we have to fix this.
Mr. Davis, you're approaching time.
Look at that.
Thanks, Jack. Thank you.
With that, is there any further public comment? Oh, don't kill yourself.
Sarah Parent, 227 Hollow Tree Ridge Road, one of the co-chairs of C D S P. The discussion tonight about the removal of portables in the library projects was frustrating and disheartening. We heard you say that portables need to be removed now. We very much appreciate you saying that. But we also heard some say that to revisit a master facilities plan, which effectively punts the removal of the portables to an unknown future. The K G and D study was a five-year plan done in 2016, therefore is still valid. Please stop talking in circles around this topic and develop a plan of action, not a plan to plan. As for the libraries, parents are in strong support of the Library Reimagine project, and we hope that this project remains the priority that was voted on in your goals and objectives. C D S P has actively worked with all seven P T Os this fall to determine funding amounts that could be available to the district to support these projects. Parents want the learning common spaces to be forward-thinking spaces where children can explore and learn. Currently, all seven schools have retrofitted spaces to meet these goals, and that's not what parents expect.
Hi, Julie Best, 38 Red Rose Circle, the other chair of C D S P. As you all know and agree, I think that from the point of view, the parents of portables are the priority every day of the week. Getting rid of them is priority number one, so we do really need a plan of action. I agree with everything that Sarah said. I just wanted to add that while we appreciate the desire to optimize all of our buildings and to have that plan to make them be everything they can be, we think the current and really longstanding situation of the portables is so suboptimal, we don't have the luxury of drawing this out another seven, 10, whatever number of years we're talking about in order to do that. So I don't, I don't think we can accommodate this comprehensive kind of soup-to-nuts approach to renovating these buildings and making them all amazing, kind of all at once. So that being said, we're hopeful that we'll move forward with an action plan on the portables. I would think these architects can come in and look and see, like, where would I put these? And the library would be a big space, looking like a very ideal spot to make some classrooms out of perhaps, and then update our libraries and take that project forward as well. So we're really hoping that we'll get this thing moving. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other public comments this evening? Seeing none, I will wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving, and I'm sorry I forgot Theater 308 and the Quiz Bowl. Our kids are very busy, but congratulations to both those groups of kids. With that, may I have a motion to adjourn this evening? Mr. Burke and Mr. Maroney, all in favor? Thank you. We are adjourned.